Good evening. It's Thursday, February 27, 2025, and I'd like to welcome you to the meeting of the South Brunswick Board of Education and to call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll read the statement of advance notice. The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 10-4-6, also known as the Sunshine Law, was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting the interest is discussed or acted upon. The primary purpose is for the board members to discuss and vote on board business. In accordance with the provisions of this-- Okay, I need a motion to move to executive meeting. Motion? Snita? Second? Rajah? Okay. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of South Brunswick hereby moves into executive session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, NJSA 10-4-21, to discuss the following: Student matters. Be it further resolved that discussion conducted in executive session will be disclosed to the public at such time as the matters have been resolved. Formal action may be taken at any meeting. Can I have--
Good evening, everybody. Just FYI, our Board of Education is still currently in an executive session, and they should be finishing up in 15 minutes. So hold your seats and, you know, buckle up. 15 minutes, we're going to start our actual meeting. All righty? Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief of Staff, and Roy Fryman, Assemblyman Fryman called me himself. I was actually on the phone when I arrived at the meeting tonight, and he asked me specifically, he's been trying, let me tell you, if there's a champion for schools right now, Roy Fryman has been doing, he's very, he's not happy. This is, he's not okay with this. He asked me specifically to give him some actionable steps that he could do to see what's possible. Last year, he was the champion, along with Andrew Zwicker and Michelle Drewless, on getting the bill passed that allowed us to get some of our money back. I don't know if there's going to be an appetite in the legislature to do that again, I don't know. But he wants, he wants to help. And I know he's not happy with the outcome so far. They learned the same thing we learned today. And so, the nice part is, they reached out, knowing that this wasn't going to be okay, and they weren't just accepting it. Anyway, part of that whole deal, as you know, some of you asked to be on a committee, some of you will be on a committee, some of you, we weren't able to take everybody, I think we have a 50 or 60 person big committee, then we have a core team committee to look at basically the impact on enrollment and funding in South Brunswick. As you've heard me talk about, and I'll talk about again tonight during the old business, there are currently between 3,177 and 3,400 homes slated to be built in South Brunswick. There are currently 200 homes online, we are expecting about 800 homes to be occupied by next July. What that means is, over the course of next year, we will be getting an influx of students. As I said the other day, I'm just saying again as part of my report now, there is no choice, this board will not have a choice come the 26, 27 year, you will have to do something. You will either redistrict, reconfigure, restructure, you will not be able to keep things as they are, because where these homes are being built cannot go to the schools they are assigned to. Period. Cannot. There's no way unless you put tons of trailers behind schools, which might happen, but remember, we have a lot of seats. So we want to do it right. We have seats, we don't want to spend extra money, we want to do it right. But understand, it is the R-word. Redistricting is the R-word, it's a bad word, and you're not going to make any friends. So I'm just warning you now, board members, you're not going to have any friends after next year. Just letting you know. Other than that, it's a really important thing coming out, you have either received or will be receiving our Educator and Education Support Person of the Year recognition for nominations. The nominations are due March 6th, so next week, everybody, next Thursday, send those in. Let's honor our amazing staff. Thank you, and that is all I have.
All right. Go ahead, Lisa.
Thank you, Mr. Federer, for your update. As always, we appreciate it. I have a question regarding the funding issue. Are there any plans, or is it too early, to discuss what we've done last year where we gathered the troops, if you will, the students, the parents, the taxpayers, to head down to Trenton for testimony? Is that anything that you're thinking about doing?
Not right now.
Okay, thank you.
Back to me?
Okay. Well, tonight we have lovely people in our audience.
About food and worrying that it's harmful for you. So what you might do is you might check, is this food harmful for me? What's going to happen then, 20, 30 years ago, maybe even 15 years ago? You might have had that thought. You might have been able to consult with your doctor, consult with your family, and get over that. Maybe even see therapy and get some support with that. But now here's what you're facing. You check once to see if carrots are healthy for you. Don't really love carrots, but I guess they're healthy for you. If you check and see if they're harmful for you, that algorithm is going to tell you for the next seven days at a minimum, all kinds of things that are not healthy for you. And you're going to keep hearing and seeing that all these different things that are harmful for you. That's a level of anxiety that did not exist before. And that is a very tough thing. No matter what it is that gets you anxious, social media is feeding it and keeps feeding it and keeps feeding it. And just while I know that, and if you ever saw the social dilemma, it's an older, but it's still pertinent.
Yeah.
That's hard. And when you live on social media, which I believe our generation, not just the young generation does. President was a reader, and I did miss it, but I understand you read like War and Peace. What did you read up there?
When did I read?
Over.
Ah.
Very sweet.
But that was also, that was great. There were high school kids who were presented. There were just all kinds, we had students who've written books. Their books were published and they were there. Really fantastic night. So again, to all of our librarians, amazing. And they just put on a great show. It was great.
Can I have just one quick second? Reggie, I think we're having some technical difficulty for the people that are watching us online. I'm getting feedback that says we're superintendent's frozen and sound is cutting in and out. So everybody, we get to hear the superintendent's report twice. No, I'm just, we'll fix it from here.
Reggie, we did have this problem last week as well.
It's the video feed. It's not the actual recording. We always end up with a good recording for posting.
Yeah.
It's the video feed, I believe, that people are live streaming. So we'll fix her up. Just wanted to put that up.
All right. No, I'm sorry for those at home. Anyway, SB Reads was awesome. And that's a new, that was second?
Second.
That's it now. It's done. It's here forever now.
Yes.
It can never go away. So congratulations on creating a new tradition for South Brunswick. What's called a broadcast from the Department of Education that will tell us more about how districts can either get some of that $3 million and what they'd have to do to do it. I don't know how that's going to play out yet. I don't really know more. But I do know that the district has a goal for this year to study this concept of cell phones. This particular class of students, which was Dr. Negerwal's civics class, they were incredible. They were incredible. So I did ask them if they would be interested in talking to the board and sharing their beliefs and opinions. They were very, very honest and fair. And they would love it if the board would entertain that. So to hear the student voice, I told them they can't just speak for themselves. They'd have to get kind of information from their peers. To do that, we're also going to help by having a survey that's going out to the community, to staff, and to six 12 students. As we know, right now, the middle school is bell to bell. There are no cell phones in the middle school, bell to bell. The high school's policy is basically a teacher choice. And it's funny, when I asked the students the policy of the high school, they knew it. Because they know when they go to one class, it's one thing, and another class could be a different thing. And that was not a violation. The board does not currently have a specific policy on cell phones. But I understand the boards would like to have one. Not that you'd like to have one that is bell to bell or not bell to bell, but you'd like to have this issue addressed. So we're going to get you some feedback. Going to have a little forum with that class. We can either bring them to us, or we can go to them, but we can figure that out. I just wanted to make sure you guys were good with that. Everybody okay with that? Okay from the kids?
Sounds good.
So that's going to come down the line. And thank you to Dr. Negerwal for letting me entertain myself by teaching a class for a period. It was a lot of fun. All right. So that was all my good news. I'm done. I still have news unfortunately, though. The budget state aid numbers came out today. And I actually gave the board an incorrect number. I told you we lost $500,000. I apologize. It was only $427,000. But we also lost, if you remember last year, when they passed the bill and we were able to get, the state gave us 45% of our original state aid cut back. That was about $645,000. That's also gone. So this year, we're starting with $1 million from the state less than we had last year. And with the 2% cap, it's worse than that. Now, I'm not going to go crazy just yet. I'm just letting you know, those numbers came out today. Our state aid was cut 427,000 plus 645,000. There are still, there were 177 districts who lost money. And all the other districts got money. I think maybe five didn't get money, got nothing, flat, and then everybody else got money. Newark got another 75 million. New Brunswick got another 11 to 12 million. But Edison did not this year. They've been getting a lot of money. A lot of, 14 of the Middlesex County School Districts lost money. That's more than half of our county lost money. They did cap our money, and this is the scary part, which I'll get into during budget season. They capped our loss at 3% of last year's state aid. That's the 427,000. The scary part is, what would it have been if they didn't cap it? Why that's important is, what does it mean the next year? But I do want to share a positive about that, if there is anything positive. I received a text from one Assemblyman's Chief of Staff, a phone call from Senator Zwicker's Chief of Staff, and Roy Fryman, Assemblyman Fryman called me himself. I was actually on the phone when I arrived at the meeting tonight. And he asked me specifically, he's been trying, let me tell you, if there's a champion for schools right now, Roy Fryman has been doing, he's very, he's not happy. This is, he's not okay with this. He asked me specifically to give him some actionable steps that he could do to see what's possible. Last year, he was the champion, along with Andrew Zwicker and Michelle Drewlis, on getting the bill passed that allowed us to get some of our money back. I don't know if there's going to be an appetite in the legislature to do that again. I don't know. But he wants, he wants to help. And I know he's not happy with the outcome so far. They learned the same thing we learned today. And so the nice part is, they reached out, knowing that this wasn't going to be okay, and they weren't just accepting it. Anyway, part of that whole deal, as you know, some of you asked to be on a committee, some of you will be on a committee, some of you, we weren't able to take everybody. Then we have a 50 or 60 person big committee, then we have a core team committee to look at basically the impact on enrollment and funding in South Brunswick. As you've heard me talk about, and I'll talk about again tonight during the old business, there are currently between 3,177 and 3,400 homes slated to be built in South Brunswick. There are currently 200 homes online. We are expecting about 800 homes to be occupied by next July. What that means is, over the course of next year, we will be getting an influx of students. As I said the other day, I'm just saying again as part of my report now, there is no choice, this board will not have a choice come the 26, 27 year. You will have to do something. You will either redistrict, reconfigure, restructure. You will not be able to keep things as they are, because where these homes are being built cannot go to the schools they are assigned to. Period. Cannot. There's no way unless you put tons of trailers behind schools, which might happen, but remember, we have a lot of seats.
Yeah.
So we would, we want to do it right. We have seats. We don't want to spend extra money. We want to do it right. But understand, it is the R-word. Redistricting is the R-word. It's a bad word. And you're not going to make any friends. So I'm just warning you now, board members, you're not going to have any friends after next year. Just letting you know. Other than that, it's a really important thing coming out. You have either received or will be receiving our Educator and Education Support Person of the Year recognition for nominations. The nominations are due March 6th, so next week, everybody, next Thursday. Send those in. Let's honor our amazing staff. Thank you, and that is all I have.
All right. Go ahead, Lisa. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Federer, for your update. As always, we appreciate it. I have a question regarding the funding issue. Are there any plans, or is it too early, to discuss what we've done last year where we gathered the troops, if you will, the students, the parents, the taxpayers, to head down to Trenton for testimony? Is that anything that you're thinking about doing?
Not right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Back to me.
Okay. Well, tonight we have lovely people in our audience that have worked very hard and that are going to be honored tonight for the 2025 National Merits Semi-finalist Student Scholarship. And I am going to call up Mr. Peter Ferella, South Brunswick High School principal.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, members of the Board of Education, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight, we're fortunate to honor a distinguished group of students and teachers. These students are recognized for their performance on the preliminary Scholastic Aptitude Test, or the PSAT, which is also the National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. Being recognized by the National Merit Organization is truly one of the most prestigious honors a high school student can achieve. National Merit semifinalists represent the top 16,000 of the 1.6 million students who took the PSAT at the same time they did. I'm pleased to say that South Brunswick High School has eight semifinalists this year. And as Mr. Federer shared, next month, we'll be honoring 46 commended students. Keeping with a treasured South Brunswick tradition, we invited our students here tonight to identify and honor outstanding educators who have significantly impacted their academic lives. Each student has inscribed a message for his or her honoree in a book specifically selected for the teacher. After I present each student to you, he or she will read the inscription and present the book to the teacher. Additionally, certificates of appreciation from President Laura Hernandez and the Board of Education will be provided to all honorees. So at this time, Board President Hernandez, please join me at the podium. Would the first row stand and form at the side? Before we begin, I would like to thank my secretary, Ms. Ramona Baker, for coordinating the special honors program. She spends countless hours organizing and communicating with our students and staff. I'd also like to thank Ms. Lourdes Somato-Luis for her assistance with creating the board's certificates. As we start our program, I thought I'd share some of the colleges and universities that our semifinalists applied to for admission. And here are a few of the schools that some of them have been accepted to. I'd like to now introduce our honorees, as well as the teachers being recognized. Our first honoree tonight is Sindarin Sussi Karen. Let's give her a round of applause. He would like to major in computer science. One of his proudest accomplishments at SBHS is being a Science Olympiad Executive Board member. One fun fact that many people do not know about him is, he plays the piano. Presenting recent advances in optics by E.H. Linfoot to Shemala Shisti, a member of the high school's science department.
All right. Dear Ms. Shisti, your class made physics feel like more than another subject. You created an environment where curiosity was encouraged, difficult problems became opportunities to think deeper, and our learning was something we wanted to do rather than something we had to. Whether it was the air resistance lab, where we redefined the parameter of success by dropping a textbook on coffee filters mid-fall, or using unorthodox tools like a phonosmagnometer to get more precise data in labs, you pushed us to question, experiment, and to grow. Beyond labs, you made physics feel like a puzzle worth solving. From tackling superhard FRQs to griding out long derivations, everything in class was about more than just trying to find the right answers. You didn't teach physics. You taught us how to think like physicists, approach problems systematically, work together, and embrace confusion as part of the process. The day our class went on strike until you agreed, or at the very least, agreed to try and ask Dr. Brahmiat to come visit us and talk to us, you leaned into it despite our annoyances. And I realize that's what great teaching is like, about inspiring the next generation of students. You gave us permission to fail, to laugh, to debate, and to see physics not just as a set of rigid rules, but as a language for understanding the world. Thank you for everything you've taught me inside and outside the classroom. I wouldn't be the same person without it.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Our next honoree tonight is Mayank Theoris. In the fall, he would like to major in biomedical engineering. During his high school years, one of his proudest accomplishments at SBHS was being selected as the captain of the robotics team. One fun fact that many people do not know about him is, he likes to play the New York Times Connections game every day. Presenting The Price of Cake by John C. Urchell to George Miller, a member of the high school mathematics department.
Dear Mr. Miller, I want to take this moment to thank you for what you've done for me throughout high school, not only as a mathematician, but as a person. When I was deciding what math class to take in sophomore year, I was worried that MCLA would be too difficult, given its reputation. Still, I decided to try the class out and see if I liked it or not. The jump to MCLA was overwhelming at first, and I vividly remember my heart racing faster and faster on the first test when I didn't know how to solve any of the questions. However, with your teaching style, I felt my problem-solving ability is improving, and I became more comfortable with solving hard problems. I still remember all of your analogies and jokes, from the ones at the beginning of multivariable calculus to the end of differential equations. Your physical demonstrations of three-dimensional graphs and your jokes about how you always have to make stuff up to solve equations have stuck with me to this day, and I'm grateful that I was able to learn these topics from you. To me, your classes were more than just math courses. They were the highlight of my school day. I would always look forward to your class each day, and your support has helped me to not only become a better problem solver, but a better person. I sincerely hope you continue using your fun teaching style and keep on inspiring your students, just like how you inspired me. And just like you would always say, on a scale from one to favorite, I think you're my favorite teacher.
It's hour back. Throughout my sophomore and junior year, I remember being genuinely excited to come to school for Latin during first block. Every single day was a distinct experience with something new in store. Your creative approach to teaching, with a new avenue of learning being pursued in every class, always kept me on my toes. From the questions you asked us about our daily lives, such as our morning routines and our favorite months of the year, to the many competitive cahoots, class with you never felt repetitive, and this amazed me. Your passion for teaching Latin was definitely felt by me, and I'm sure, by our entire class. A prime example of this is the unforgettable Caesar assassination simulation on the Ides of March. The time and effort you took to organize this event shows how dedicated you are to your students, and it is nothing short of amazing. The intricate setup involved the entire class in a way I have never seen before during my entire time in high school, and I don't think any other person could have done it as well as you. I feel sorry for all the future Latin students who will never be able to experience the thrill of tracking down teachers in the building to find clues and piecing together bits of information in an attempt to figure out who Caesar is.
Premed. During our high school years, one of her proudest accomplishments at SBHS was being president of a club called She's the First, educating and empowering women in other countries. One fun fact that many people do not know about her is, she dances Kuthak, which is a form of Indian classical dance. Presenting Fahrenheit 451 by Ray Bradbury to Richard Luca, a third grade teacher at Cambridge Elementary School.
Thank you. Dear Mr. Luca, when I first tried to write this speech, I didn't know where to start, because it feels like I have been waiting so many years to say these words. It feels like a lifetime ago now to make every single one of us felt like we mattered, like we were capable of achieving great things. You believed in us before we even knew how to believe in ourselves, and in that process, you changed lives, mine included. I will carry with me the lessons I learned in your class, even though I didn't realize at the time just how important they were. I remember how you made me feel like I had a voice worth listening to, and that has stayed with me, giving me the confidence to strive for my goals. One of these goals brings me here today. I'm honored to share that I have been named a National Merit semifinalist. It's an achievement I'm proud of, but not one I reached alone. It's a reflection of all the support, encouragement, and belief that incredible teachers like you have had in me over the years. Thank you for being the teacher who didn't just do their job, but who went above and beyond to make a difference. Thank you for being someone I will always look up to. I'm not done, sorry. Sorry. I've realized over the years that one of the greatest gifts I've ever received, and perhaps one that I do not express enough gratitude towards...
That is so awesome. Thank you. Are you crying? I'm crying. I'm crying. Congratulations. Great job. Great job. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Here you go, guys. This is for you. Oh, thank you. Wow. Thank you so much. You may go.
Our next honoree tonight is Ria Gupta. Ria would like to major in economics on a pre-law track. During her high school years, one of her proudest accomplishments at SBHS was organizing the first reproductive rights rally in SBHS with over 300 student supporters. One fun fact that many people do not know about her is that Ria loves collecting records. Presenting Funny Story by Emily Henry to Ellie Nichols, a member of the high school mathematics department.
So I would like to start my speech off with A Funny Story, which is ironically the name of the book I'm giving you today. Ms. Markowitz's entire love story began with a National Merit Scholarship that sent her cousin to Notre Dame. There, he became roommates with the man who would eventually become her husband. So you could say that National Merit is quite literally the reason why Ms. Markowitz met her husband. But that's just the beginning of the interesting stories that make her who she is. Ms. Markowitz, you are unlike any teacher I've ever had. You're the kind of teacher I can actually talk to about anything, whether it's college or math or music or friends. You help me navigate any problem with compassion and humor. And your kindness isn't just surface level. It's deep, genuine, and unconditional. You create this incredible classroom environment where everyone forgets how you made me feel, seen and valued and capable of these extraordinary things. You are a teacher, but also a mentor and role model and confidant and friend, someone who doesn't just shape my academic journey, but who helps shape who I am as a person. From A Funny Story, I want to know myself, to test my edges and see where I stop and the rest of the world begins. You taught me how to push past limits and how to believe in myself. You showed me that growth isn't about being perfect. It's about testing my edges, embracing the journey, and seeing where it takes me. Thank you for everything, Ms. Markowitz.
That was so good. I made it philosophical.
It was a much-needed breath of fresh air in a year that often felt overwhelming, and it was a space where I could immerse myself in something I genuinely loved. But beyond the coding and projects, it was your positive energy and the environment you created that made the class so impactful. What really stuck out to me was how you cultivated such a friendly and welcoming atmosphere. When I think back to VR, I always remember our huddle-up moments, where we posed to talk about what we were doing and learn more about each other as a class. From hearing about your latest home improvement projects to classmate stories for weekends, I saw our class transform into a community. It made the class feel personal and connected, and I truly enjoyed being a part of it. You also always challenged us to go above and beyond with our projects and to think with creativity instead of just sticking to the obvious. I always left class proud of the projects I created because of your encouragement to always push ourselves to do our best and create projects that were both functional and well-designed. One of the most unexpected yet impactful lessons from your class was your top five: sleep, hydration, nature, mobility, and music. To be honest, I was surprised at first that a computer science teacher would place so much emphasis on movement and fresh air, but at a time when my life seemed to consist only of tests and late nights...
Thank you for assisting me. Tanisha would like to major in Cell Biology. During her high school years, one of her proudest accomplishments is being a current member of the National Honor Society. One fun fact that many people do not know about her is that she also likes to dance Kuthak, which is a form of Indian classical dance. Presenting Phantoms in the Brain by Oliver Sacks, MD to Subha Swarren, a member of the high school science department.
Thank you, Mr. Ferella. Dear Ms. Isherin, throughout my education, your guidance has been the most pivotal in shaping my outlook on learning. I still remember the morning in seventh grade when we had a conversation about our biology class before class started. You asked how I found the class and biology as a subject, and I shared my excitement. Thank you for challenging me, inspiring me, and helping me discover my passion. And thank you for the guidance you offered during my visits to your classroom in my senior year. I will carry your advice with me as I continue through my education and career, always remembering how your encouragement ignited my initial spark of passion. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Good job.
Our final honoree tonight is Julia Pichara. Julia would like to major in Mechanical Engineering. During her high school years, one of her proudest accomplishments was assisting in leading her Science Olympiad team to fifth and sixth place in a New Jersey state competition in 2023 and 2024. One fun fact that many...
Quite a lot of pennies. Reflecting on my third year of SAOLI, I think it's genuinely miraculous that I'm always greeted with a smile every time I virtually barge into your classroom uninvited. Thank you, sir, for your past and continued patience and openness to conversation. There have also been many times on my Science Olympiad board journey where I have been quick to judge others or think negatively about things. You never fail to give others the benefit of the doubt, which always makes me so grudgingly reflect on myself and how I can be a more compassionate leader. Oh, side note, I guess now I can join the group of SAOLI alumni who can finally stop begging for you to delay your retirement. All jokes aside, thank you so much for continuing to advise Science Olympiad, even though it might give you a considerable headache at times. Science Olympiad has given me so many lovely memories, so much rich STEM knowledge, and so many amazing friends for which I am forever grateful. This club would not be possible or quite as enjoyable without your advisorship, so thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Noble, for being such a warm, kind, and amazing teacher, SAOLI advisor, and overall a wonderful human being. I may never be able to fully express my gratitude or give you the honor you deserve, but hopefully this little inscription made you smile. Thank you, Julia.
Congratulations. Thank you.
I want to thank each of our National Merit semifinalists for selecting just the right books for their teachers and for documenting and sharing the impact that they have had on your academic careers. I also want to thank our teachers for making a difference in the lives of our students. Additionally, I would like to honor our students' parents tonight for their hard work and I would ask them to please stand and share a slide, recognizing all of them. Parents, please stand, parents. As I conclude my comments and turn the microphone back over to Board President Hernandez, please join me in one more round of applause for our students' scholars and their teacher honorees.
Well, this is always the best part of the board meetings, when we have our students come up and just, like, I'm going to cry. Like, we're just so proud of you, and to know you're going to do amazing things is Well, that was awesome, awesome, awesome. Do I have to, like, motion back to come back, or just say, welcome back? Okay, we're back. And we're back. So the next order of business would be our board committee and liaison report. Ms. Khan for policy?
Should I do that last before first read?
Do you want me to skip over you and come back?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Then that would be you, Ms. Rogers, with finance.
Okay. So as I had mentioned at the last meeting, the finance committee did meet, we handed out the calendar, y'all got the calendar in December. We will be meeting in March, now that we have the update from Mr. Superintendent Federer.
And to have 75 kids in this play, all on target and excited, the teachers did an amazing job, the kids did an amazing job, so I just really had to give a shout-out to Brunswick Acres' crew. Nobody else? Okay. Next up is old business, Mr. Feder.
All right, so I'll expand a little bit more on the enrollment. Just so we're clear, the K5 work that's going to be done, the three staff members who are leading that are our Director of Special Projects, Peter Reteen, Principal of Constable School, Christina Vissi, and Rob Sears, who is our K12 music supervisor. We're going to continue, and you're adding students every year. It's a problem that doesn't have a real financial solution, or not one that you'd be open to wanting to hear. So, the work is really important. I believe we have Laura will be sitting on the core team, and Dipa, are you on the core team as well? Is that correct? Is that, those the two?
Yeah.
Yeah. And, you know, there'd be a lot of work. You're gonna get updates from the team leading it, and there's also a bigger committee of, I think it's 50 or 60 people. It's huge. We had a very huge turnout, we had over 100 people request to be on it, and we took as many as we could handle, really, in the second floor. So, just know that that's happening as a result of all of this enrollment that's coming up. Reg, did you get my email? If you can check, I sent you an email, yeah? That's it for, are there any questions about our update on enrollment? What we've done for the last eight years, this is what's called the school closure calendar. This is not the full district calendar. The full district calendar is online, and that full district calendar has pretty much a ton of holidays, including Christmas and other holidays as well. This is the calendar from the 1516 school year, exactly as it is. Again, prior to my arrival, we've taken this calendar, I think we made it a little prettier, but we've taken this calendar and done exactly the same thing. In this particular calendar, it's a horizontal calendar, the one we use now is a vertical calendar. Other than that, it's the same 10 months, we don't include July and August. We've included days that our school are off, associated with where we would not otherwise be off. So, if a holiday falls on a winter break or on a spring break, we don't mention the holiday. It is basically to tell parents when we come to school and when we don't. That's pretty much what the school closure calendar is. However, we do have other calendar, and that is the district calendar that is on the website, and that calendar does list other holidays as well. If you notice, there are no holidays associated with the calendar that are not associated with a school closure, that would be unknown to a person. There are other calendars that exist out there in many districts, but I really, my part tonight is I'm just sharing that. I'm not making a recommendation to the board, I'm simply sharing facts, because some information that came to me was there was a misunderstanding about the concept of what's happening with the calendar. Again, at no time from minute 1 to now has there been a recommendation by anybody, including myself, including any board member, to remove Christmas or any other holiday from any calendar, period. That's just the factual information. Laura, if I can turn that over to you, if there's any further discussion about the topic.
Okay, so, after the last board meeting, this is going to be the third board meeting we've discussed the calendar and the issue of Christmas. So, after the last board meeting, the board, the superintendent, and I myself personally received multiple emails from both board members and residents regarding adding Christmas to our school closure calendar, which is what Dr. Feder was just talking about. Feder, I gave you a doctor, you're a doctor. High five. But after some thought and some research, we decided to put it back on the agenda for a discussion and ultimately a vote. So, we are a very diverse district, and it is a privilege to celebrate our diversity. Part of doing so is recognizing important holidays and traditions that are celebrated by the citizens of South Brunswick. The holidays that we currently acknowledge with the days off encompass the face of break or spring break, so they tried to change the whole calendar to school closed, as Lake West Windsor has it. And I can tell you, it did not go well in either district, and they immediately changed it back. Montclair actually has Christmas written alongside of "school closed winter break." To change, this is my opinion, this is not the board, not the opinion of the board, to change an entire calendar to just "closed" instead of recognizing a holiday in which we already celebrate, that we already have school off for this holiday, on the school closing calendar, just by adding one word makes no sense to me. As a diverse district, we should respect each other and acknowledge the importance as such. I also, holidays in which we already close in recognition of these holidays that are to be noted on the school closure calendar whenever a holiday falls on a Monday through Friday between the dates of September 1st through June 30th. If any of the above holidays falls on a Saturday or Sunday, they will not be denoted on the school closure calendar. If any of the above holidays that I mentioned falls on a Monday through Friday on a scheduled recess such as spring break or winter break, the identified here each other out without interruptions. Differences of opinions are welcomed, disrespect is not. We do not have to agree with each other, but we do have to respect each other, and we have to allow each other to speak without interruption. If not, I will shut down this discussion. So, with that being said, do I have comments from the board?
Let's just, let's just follow some rules, some parliamentary rules here. So, a couple of things. The board made a motion, seconded, and voted on a school calendar at our last board meeting. You're making a motion to change that. So, we're gonna make a motion, Laura's gonna make a motion to change a current school-approved school calendar. And I need a second on that, and then we'll have the discussion. After the discussion happens, if we decide, if the board decides that they want to change an already-approved school calendar, we need a motion to rescind. We'll make a motion to rescind the previous, the previous board-approved calendar, and then I get a second on that. We'll open it up for discussion. For a motion to rescind to pass, it needs 2/3 yes votes. So, you need 6 out of the 9, not 9 members, there's 8 here. So, we would need 5 out of the 8 to make that happen, and that's how that whole process would work. So, right now, what I heard you say was you wanted, you have a motion on the table, and we have a second.
I thought there was a discussion first.
Well, there's, do we have a motion on the table to discuss the, make a change to the school calendar? Yes, and we have a second? Now we have discussion.
Okay.
On changing that school, on those recommended changes.
I would like to make a statement. First and foremost, as a woman of Catholic faith, I support any references to Catholic holidays on our district calendar, along with any other religion. On and approved by the dates indicated are for academic classes, which will not be in session during breaks. This calendar is a tool, a practical tool, just like calendars for state and federal testing, PTO meetings, and sports. They all have their own calendar, and none list holidays. These, along with the nine individual school calendars, roll up into the master district calendar, which again lists every holiday. Parents want a practical, uncluttered view of schedules, including, but not limited to, when they have to bring their child to play a sport, when testing takes place, what days the district puts closed, so vacations, childcare, or days off is not listed because school is not in session during summer break. Referring back to the posting here in 2015, you can see that clearly. In my review of other districts, including North Brunswick, Monroe, Milltown, Jamesburg, and Woodbridge, for example, all reflect winter, spring, and summer breaks with no reference to holidays on the school closure calendar. However, since this issue has caused discord, I propose, as I have done in the past two meetings, that we reconsider how we present the school closed calendar. I also found that West Windsor Plainsboro follows this approach, and I have a copy of this calendar, which I would like to hand out to the members of the board and place on the record. Thank you. If you could just pass it out. This also can be accessed on West Windsor Plainsboro's website, along with every single public school in New Jersey. Their calendar simply states "school closed," with no explanation of the holiday, be it a federal, a state, or religious holiday. However, they do list conferences, personal development days, early dismissal, and emergency closures due to weather, because that directly impacts parents and staff. Excuse me. It's a binary system, when we think about it, a binary system, similar to signs in a store, in a store window. Either they're open, or they're closed. I believe this streamlined approach would be effective. It keeps the focus solely on school closures. It's concise and clearly communicates the objective of the calendar. This is without having a parent, then, to filter through the information, because if we add Christmas, every holiday must be represented on the school closure calendar, or it is unfair. Now, if you do that, if you do, if you, excuse me, if you do not do that, you will run into issues with other religions that feel that they have been left out because they're not indicated on the school closure calendar. Excuse me, I'm talking, you cannot speak. I suggest that this board take into consideration this simplified approach. This would avoid highlighting any one holiday over others on the school closure calendar. And more importantly, it would reduce administrative burden on the staff, allowing them and this board to focus on what matters most: educating our kids, dealing with the funding challenges, and the many uncertainties that we are going to be soon facing. I sincerely hope that this recommendation is considered by all in good faith. Thank you.
Any other suggestions? Ms. Ferrara? Thank you, Lisa, for sharing. I kind of feel that our town has become a beautiful, diverse town, and for us to adopt this school closing calendar with nothing on it to denote that diversity that we all share in this town is, it's a little bit sad to me in that I think it's probably good for parents to know when their children's classmates are off for a certain religious holiday, that they, maybe they would take extra care or caution not to bother them for child visits, or, you know, friend visits, or maybe they just keep an extra eye out for how they dress on their specific holiday. They take joy and pride in that. And that kind of pride I've seen in the town, I've lived in the town for 36 years, and Mr. Feder, Christmas was on the school closing calendar when my children went through Greenbrook, Crossroads South, and the high school. I don't know when it went off, but I can guarantee you that it was originally on the school closing calendars. You might have to go back, my kids are now in their 40s, but it was. And I think there are some teachers here who know it was, too. I just think that diversity is something we celebrate. I argue that there wasn't a sense of inclusion for the Christian holiday in that we know winter break is specifically tailored to allow us as Christians to celebrate Christmas. I personally think this is a boring calendar. This doesn't celebrate diversity, and to put Christmas on, as Ms. Hernandez suggested, is inclusive, and it doesn't hurt anyone. Thank you. Any other comments? Dr. Raj?
Thank you. Diwali is a holiday that me and my family celebrate, and it means a lot to us. More than anything else, seeing Diwali on the calendar reminds me that I live in a society where Diwali can be freely celebrated. There are many, many countries across the world where Diwali cannot be celebrated, there are restrictions, and there are, there is violence whenever Diwali is celebrated. It's not, it's not a simple thing to celebrate Diwali, but it's a privilege here that I live in a society where I can freely practice my religion as well as celebrate festivals that are meaningful to me. So, having Diwali on the calendar, it's just a reminder for me, and I appreciate having religious holidays marked in the calendar. That's my personal thing, it means a lot. So, I support having religious holidays marked on the calendar.
Comment? No other comments?
Yeah, I would like to make a comment. So, I think this is the, I missed the last board meeting, I was on leave, so, little bit closer, okay. Can you hear me now? Okay, all right. So, firstly, I appreciate my colleagues giving all their comments and thoughts on this. One of the things that I wanted to state is, I'm a practicing Hindu, and as Smita rightly said, it, you know, it's very reassuring and also a great sense of pride and acknowledgement once, you know, our holidays are recognized, right? Because when we bring, when we come as board members or as community members, we bring our whole selves, which means we bring our value systems and everything that means so much to us. One of the things that I wanted to also point out is that I studied in a convent school, so I went to convent all my life, I studied in a convent, I have a lot of friends who are Christians, are practicing Christians, and a lot of friends who belong to other faiths as well. One of the things that strikes me is that, you know, Good Friday and Christmas specifically comes on scheduled recesses of school. So, not seeing that acknowledgement on a school closing calendar, I can see how that comes across to, you know, people who practice their faith, right? And I think it's important to ensure that, because this is going to happen every year, because we are on that scheduled break. And it's important to our community members, I think a lot of community members have also written about it. And even in the first instance when we had this discussion, I think I had made my views very clear that I think that this is an issue that we, as a board, and I appreciate everybody's, you know, enthusiasm to discuss this, but I think we have far more important issues that we should be spending time discussing, rather than discussing this issue. And while I, you know, I, I support acknowledging religious holidays, it means so much to our diverse community, and I think we should, we should acknowledge that if somebody were to remove Diwali from a holiday, from the calendar, for me, I would not, I would not like that as much. So, I think, you know, if it's important to our community members, this is our school calendar, our district's calendar, of course, we can take pointers from what happens in other
I studied in a convent. I have a lot of friends who are Christians, or practicing Christians, and a lot of friends who belong to other faiths as well. One of the things that strikes me is that, you know, Good Friday and Christmas specifically comes on scheduled recesses of school. So not seeing that acknowledgement on a school-closing calendar, I can see how that comes across to, you know, people who practice their faith, right? And I think it's important to ensure that, because this is going to happen every year, because we are on that scheduled break. And it's important to our community members, I think a lot of community members have also written about it. And even in the first instance, when we had this discussion, I think, I had made my views very clear, that I think that this is an issue that we, as a board, and I appreciate everybody's, you know, enthusiasm to discuss this, but I think we have far more important issues that we should be spending time discussing, rather than discussing this issue. And while I, you know, I, I support acknowledging religious holidays, if it means so much to our diverse community, I think we should, we should acknowledge that if somebody were to remove Diwali from a holiday, from the calendar, for me, I would not, I would not like that as much. So, I think, you know, if it's important to our community members, this is our school calendar, our district's calendar, of course, we can take pointers from what happens in other school districts. No one is preventing us from doing that. It can be a, you know, sort of a guidance for us, but I don't think we are, we're clearly driven by what West Windsor Plainsboro does, and so on and so forth. I mean, we are here to drive our own policies, the way we work, what's agreeable to us as a board, and I'm here to support the entire community, and I support acknowledging Good Friday and Christmas on the school closure calendar.
Do we have any more? Raj?
One quick comment, again, to just add on. It also, having those days on the calendar gives an opportunity to be aware of what other religion is celebrating. Even students have an opportunity to wish each other for their particular faith, so it's, again, more broader awareness of each other, what are their auspicious days. So, all in all, it's, it doesn't hurt to have religious holidays being mentioned on the calendar.
Thank you. May I make another comment? Sure. I appreciate that. I do. I really do. I think, though, if you're going to do that, you have, we have an obligation. I mean, we are a public school system. If you're going to acknowledge, you need to acknowledge all. You have other religions out there that are not acknowledged on the calendar, on the school closure calendar. However, you know, I know some people may not think it's needed, but I think that it's an offense to those that celebrate other holidays, and they're not listed on there. Thank you.
I have a... I want to follow up with that. Lisa, I totally get you. I get it, and I respect that. But any other religion where we would, if we did not have spring break, we would have off Christmas, absolutely. So, any other holiday that we would have off regardless, we just, it just happens, just like Smitha said, it happens to fall, and it will always fall, during our winter break. So, it will never be acknowledged, because it's always fall on our winter break. It's one word, one word. So, if, I agree with you, if there's other holidays that we already have the day off for, and it falls from September 1st to June 30th, a Monday through Friday, during, and regardless if it's winter break or spring break, yes, we should acknowledge it.
You are acknowledging and agreeing, if I hear you correctly, that if any other holiday, excuse me, any other religious holiday, including Hanukkah, Passover...
We don't have off for that.
Excuse me, I'm not saying that.
No, but that's what I'm saying.
No, no, let me finish. Let me finish. Okay? Don't cut me off.
Go ahead.
You had just stated, if I heard you right, that if any other holiday falls on the break, any break, I'm not saying if it just falls on the days that were in...
Correct.
Right? So, and forgive me to my Jewish friends, I don't know when Hanukkah is this year, but if Hanukkah falls on a date that is outside the break, what you're saying is you do not believe it should be on the calendar, if I, if I heard you correctly.
No, you didn't correct me.
Wait, wait, wait. So, let me just finish my thought, and then you can correct me. That if it does not fall on a day, I may have said it wrong, if it does not fall on a day where the schools are closed, that's not coming out right, if it falls on a day that the schools are closed, it will be reflected on that calendar. So, if Hanukkah, for example, or Passover falls on the same date of spring break and of winter break, those holidays will be recognized.
That's not what I'm saying.
Okay, so that's why I want to be clear.
Yeah, that's not what I'm saying.
Clearly understand what you're saying.
Right. What I'm saying, if we had Hanukkah off regardless, then yes. But we don't have, it's not one of the listed, it's not one of the holidays that we have off.
No, no, I'm saying if, during winter break...
But Lisa, we don't have it off, so what I'm saying is the holidays...
Excuse me, no, no, I want, I'm not being clear. If Hanukkah falls on December 24th...
Yeah.
It will be on the calendar.
We don't have it off, ever. If it falls, we never have it off. So, what I'm saying, no, what I'm saying is the days that we would, any of the holidays that we, that I just listed, that are on our calendar, that we would, if there was not a winter break, we would have Christmas Day off. But if there was not a winter break, we wouldn't have Hanukkah off. It is not one of the days that we have off. That's what I'm saying. I'm saying just the days, just the holidays that are celebrated.
Okay, so, let me then address spring break.
Yeah.
We're not off for Easter...
Because it's Sunday.
Because it's a Sunday.
Correct.
But we are off for spring break.
Correct.
So, are you saying that if Passover does not, if Passover lands on spring break, you're saying that just because we don't have off for Passover, we would not acknowledge Passover?
Not on our school, that's exactly what I'm saying.
I wanted to be clear.
Because it would not be on, I'm just saying, the days that we, it is one word. That's all it is. And if we do not, if we don't have it off anyway, then we don't put it down. We wouldn't have off anyway.
Just want to be clear.
Yeah, exactly.
Just want to be clear.
And if Christmas falls on a Saturday or Sunday during spring break...
I understand.
It doesn't get acknowledged.
I understand. Okay. Just wanted to be clear.
Okay.
Any other comments? We're good here? Okay, Dave, what's this procedure now?
So, we have a motion on the table, a second discussion, to change a motion that's already been approved by the board. So, we need a motion to rescind our last board meetings. I'll call for it. I'll just do this. I'm making a motion...
Do you do, you do it.
To rescind our last board meeting's calendar motion that approved the, the days-off calendar for the school year '25, '26. Can I get a second? I got a second from Julie Ferrara. Now, I'm going to take a roll call vote, and we're going to need five of the eights to be yes. And I will go, Ms. Julie Ferrara?
Yes.
Ms. Alicia Khan?
No.
Mr. Rajakrishna?
No.
Dr. Smitha Raj?
Yes.
Mrs. Lisa Rogers?
No.
Mr. Rajesh Soni?
Yes.
Mrs. Deepakarthik?
Yes.
Ms. Laura Hernandez?
Yes.
We have the five of the eight. So, that motion carries. We rescinded our previously passed board motion. Now, we have a motion that's on the table to make changes to our, our school closure calendar in the form of noting holidays during the, during the work weeks, or during Monday through Friday that fall in a given break.
Correct.
That's basically what I'm hearing. I mean, a lot has gone back and forth, but that's what I heard, that we're going to note, note...
Of the holidays that were listed.
Monday through Friday that fall within a break. You had a first, you had a, we had a first, we had a second, we had discussion. Now, I'm going to take a roll call vote, because I think this one's important, since it's...
No, you have, don't you have to make a motion to change? I mean, we've already rescinded.
She, she made the motion.
Motion to change it, though.
She made the motion to change it. That's what's on the table. We did a motion to rescind the previous board-approved calendar. That's been rescinded. Now, we're making a motion, making changes to our current calendar, and I'm going to do a roll call vote on that, just because it's important, and it shouldn't just be a yes, no, or a yeah, no. So...
Excuse me, he has a question.
Can you just restate it?
Restate the question.
The motion on the table is that we change our current school closure calendar to denote religious holidays on the days that fall within a break, Monday through Friday.
Religious holidays that we already have off.
That we already have off, Monday through, on the, on the days it falls during Monday through Friday. If the school is closed during a break, we will denote a religious holiday if it falls during that break.
Religious holiday that we would have off regardless if there was a break or not.
Correct. Same, am I saying the same thing?
You are.
Yes, thank you.
Just wanted to make sure, okay.
Getting me, getting me mixed up. All right. Clear?
Hey, I'm calling the doctor.
Everybody clear?
Yeah.
Golden? All right. Here we go, roll call vote. Ms. Julie Ferrara?
Yes.
Ms. Alicia Khan?
No.
Mr. Rajakrishna?
No.
Ms., Dr. Smitha Raj?
Yes.
Mrs. Lisa Rogers?
No.
Mr. Rajesh Soni?
Yes.
Mrs. Deepakarthik?
Yes.
Ms. Laura Hernandez?
Yes.
That motion carries. We will provide an updated school closure calendar at our next board meeting for everybody to review, but the motion is carried. There's no vote at our next meeting.
Right. Done. Okay.
That issue is put to bed.
Yes, it is put to bed. This was our third board meeting on this. We need to move on to other things. Any new business? None at this time. Now, public comment. We can have a public comment on any topic. We had decided to go to one public comment instead of two. So, the Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on the educational issues, and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. Complete copies of Policy 0167, which govern this portion of the meeting, are available to the public at the auditorium entrance, online, or by contacting the board office. To permit the fair and orderly expression of comments, we ask that the participants be recognized by the presiding officer, and preface comments by announcing his or her name, place of residence, group affiliation, if appropriate, and by, do we have a sign-up sheet there?
Yes, there's a sign-up sheet.
Okay. And by, and by completing the sign-in sheet that's at the podium. Please print legibly, or we may be unable to document your name for the permanent record. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes. No participant may speak more than once on the same topic. Mr. Palowski will indicate when you have 15 seconds remaining. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participants may address or question board members. No discussion between a participant or respondent shall extend the three-minute time limit. It is our plan to listen to each member of the public. Once all questions and comments from all members of the public are made, the Board of Education may respond, or respond via email in the most timely and efficient manner available. All questions and comments will be noted. Before we call you up, please note what I said before. We fully welcome different opinions. We do not welcome disrespect. So, when you come up to the podium, please keep that in mind. Mr. Palowski, do we have anybody preregistered?
We do. We have Mr. Arthur Napolitano. He can make his way to the podium. And if Mike, Mr. Michael James could make his way up as well, he would, yeah, Mr. Napolitano.
Thank you to the board members. Thank you very much. I did come in relation to, I first got to be honest with you. I live here in Channel Park since 1997. My son, Christian, who is now 26 years old, came all through the, the school district. My daughter, Siana, is now a senior in high school. And the only time I looked at the school calendar was Sunday after the priest at my church brought it up, the Saturday night mass. So, he said that Christmas was not on the calendar. So, I looked, and I saw, and since then, there's, there's been a petition, there's over 400 signatures since then. But I applaud the board for their decisions tonight. There's no need for me to speak any longer. I thank you for your decision on adding the holidays as you, as you, excuse me, as you chose. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll sign this.
Yeah, please do.
Good evening. My name is Michael James. I'm a resident of Monmouth Junction of South Brunswick. I've been here for 30 years. What I bring to the board is your thanks for the previous session, and I've learned a lot tonight. I came prepared, because I wanted to ask the board, previous to your discussion, hoping that you would all be true to the district themes and the values that you post on the website, and to the goals that are posted on the website, all of them, which, last year's district theme is listed as Equity Begins With Me. The school board values equity, partnerships, and innovation, and the school board's goals, to monitor the district rules, and the first on the list is equity slash disproportionality. The 2025-2026 proposed calendar denotes specifically on the school calendar for the Muslim holidays, their holiest day of Eid al-Adha and Eid al-Fitr, the end of Ramadan, Eid al-Fitr, and the Eid al-Furad, the Day of Power, Islam's holiest day, specifically denoted. The Judaism holidays that are specifically denoted, there are two days set for Rosh Hashata, September 23 and 24, and Yom Kippur, Judaism's holiest day, their Day of Atonement. The winter break doesn't even cover Hanukkah for 2025-2026, because Hanukkah falls between December 14th and December 22nd, and the winter break begins December 23rd. Passover, April 1st through April 9th, does not, is covered partially in the spring break. And the Hindu holiday of Diwali is noted for Monday, October 20th. There are currently no Christian holidays specifically denoted. That was addressed by the board this evening to revise that, and I thank you for that. I did the research also, that these state statutes denote Good Friday and Christmas Day, specifically as state holidays, Statute 36, Section 111. It's not acceptable to ask for Easter Sunday to put on there, because it is a Sunday, and the holiday calendar covers Monday through Friday. But Good Friday is a rotating day. April 3rd of 2026, and Christmas Day will fall on a Thursday this year. So, yes, I just want to thank you all. Please remember your values, that you do state Equity Begins With Me, and I thank you for the partnership and the reason that was shown tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Hello, everyone. Barry Nathanson, 40 Dunston Lane. I wasn't going to speak, but I will, because there's been some misconceptions, and I want to clarify it. There has never, ever been a calendar that Christmas is on, been on. And I will be happy to send it to the board, some older calendars. Christmas has always been designated on, we have a live calendar now, so it's a lot different than when I first moved into the district, or when I first came on to this board. We used to have a live calendar, but it was a sheet. The sheet said Christmas. The closures holiday list never, ever said Christmas. Okay, that's the first misconception. In Jewish religion, we have approximately 15 to 20 religious holidays. The only two that are on are days, are days off. But, so, giving you a history, when I went to school, I personally, and anyone Jewish, had to take the day off, and because it was not on the calendar, we did not get the day off. I had to miss this day of school. So, you understood that. The other thing, too, is, is that you took the, if you look it up, you rescinded a vote, which you're allowed to do. However, the next vote has to be done by New Jersey state law on the following meeting, not the same meeting. And Mr. Palowski, you should really look that up, because that's the way it's supposed to be, because the rest of the public should have a chance to have, to come up here to speak on the revised resolution, or revised change, which they haven't had, because they didn't know that that was happening. So, I think that you need to look at that, and... So I think that you need to look at that, and that was an error on what was done this evening. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we will review that, and if need be, place a motion on the agenda for our next board meeting.
I'm done with this topic. I'm done with this topic.
Good evening. My name is Frank Morelli. I've been living in South Brunswick now. I moved here 36 years ago. My children went through the school system here, and I came here really based on the meeting last week, where I was pretty disturbed and disappointed with the outcome of the discussion. I'm very happy that the topic of Christmas was brought up again, and even expanded to include other religious holidays. I salute you all for that. But going back to last week, the issue was inclusion of Christmas, because it, not only because it's a Christian holiday, it's also a federal holiday, and the federal holidays do appear on the calendar for school closures. So when they fall within, within a school week. Okay? So that's really what was very upsetting. But I'm very happy with the outcome. I salute you for revisiting it, based on some input. And I'm just here, as a Christian, as a Catholic, I needed to come up here, I needed to speak out, I needed to let you know that I heard what happened last week, and I really wasn't happy, and that I'll pray for all of you, no matter what. But I'm really, really pleased with the way you all addressed this issue tonight. Thank you very much.
She's the assistant.
I'm, I'm sorry, but you can't hand out documents unless they're handed to the board prior. So you can hand, I can take those.
Oh, that would be great.
And then we can disseminate them, we can disseminate them after. Thank you.
I live in Heathcote. I'm so glad I'm not sitting up there tonight, having to make these really difficult decisions that you guys are making, that are so fraught with emotion, because they're so personal to all of us. And after watching last week's meeting, it really got me thinking. It really got me thinking. So, a couple of thoughts in regards to the school closure calendar versus the live one as a parent and a teacher. The days-off calendar is supposed to be a quick reference for staff and families. We always hung it, we, teachers still do, they hang it right behind their desk. The more information on it, the more crowded it becomes, and the harder it is to read. If you look at the handout of West Windsor, that we've all probably could see in our sleep now, their days-off calendar only contains the information about whether their school, whether it's off, or if there's early dismissal. It's clear, concise, quick, and very easy to read. But on the other hand, if all religious holidays are going to be added to that calendar or the live calendar, then let's use a comprehensive guide to be sure that no religion is given accidental preferential treatment in our beautifully diverse community. Judging which holidays are important enough to be mentioned, simply because there's currently a day off for it, can easily become a problem as our community changes and grows. The act of judging by any means becomes ethically wrong. Luckily for us, as you can see, eventually in the handout, our state provides this, and it does every year, NJ.gov, not including the 21 holidays that happen over July and August. This school year has 145 holidays that are so important that the state approves the absences for the kids if they are worshippers. Obviously, this would make the days-off calendar impossible to read. They could, maybe should, be added to the live calendar, which contains many holidays and is already robust with information. See the last page of the handout. Personally, for whatever it's worth, I personally think school calendars should purely be about school information. People can easily find religious holiday information from their religious institution or Google. Took me less than 20 seconds. But if we're going to include the information, let's be sure not to leave any of our community out. Thanks.
Chris Resnick, Kendall Park. I just have one comment. I don't know where the separation of church and state falls into all this, but I have a real problem with a school board member going to the priest, who then is standing on a pulpit, announcing to his congregation what the public school is doing. I have a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Any more? Anybody else? No more? That's it? Okay. So we will now close that portion of the meeting. No, I'm not allowed to. The next order of business is the consent agenda review by Mr. Palowski. Does anybody have question, right, am I supposed to say that?
Let him just do his thing first.
Oh, oh, God.
I've got to review.
Darn, I was almost there. I almost made him in.
I mean, you can ask for questions, and I don't have to do the review.
I'm sorry. Sorry. I almost made it.
Everybody, consent agenda review. We have our transfers, financials, and bills list, quite extensive with regards to the backup. We're accepting a donation from Brunswick Acres PTO. We're approving our allocations for some IDEA basic and preschool funding. We're approving an agreement for Department of Transportation testing services, all mandatory. We have a lease purchase agreement for some vehicles that we're purchasing for our maintenance and grounds crews. We have, we're recording and awarding some bids for some transportation for some students out of district placements, and we have an extension of professional services. We are approving a resolution, awarding a contract for a purchase over the bid limit for some Chromebooks that are necessary for state testing. We have a resolution authorizing the use of competitive contracting process for the identification screener services for gifted and talented. We're approving a student field trips list. We also have our harassment, intimidation, bullying motion, and we are, we have our travel-related reimbursement expenses, and we're finalized, last motion we're, we have on our agenda is an out-of-district placement for students whose initials appear in the backup, and you have your personnel. And that is your consent agenda this evening.
Okay, now? Questions?
Questions.
Yeah, I just have a question. And I apologize, Mr. Palowski, I meant to call you today, but I got caught up at work. Regarding the Chromebooks.
Mm-hmm.
Are we still using the Chromebooks that have been in existence since 2010, I believe?
No.
No?
Not 2010, 2020, we have.
No, 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 no. My apologies. From when we first started doing testing, way back when it was Park. Are we still using that technology? Yeah, that?
No.
No, so we have a different Chromebook?
Yeah, the Chromebooks, the Chromebooks that we purchased were purchased through some grants provided through, during COVID.
Okay, so-
And those Chromebooks have become outdated, obsolete.
The ones that we used to have?
Correct.
So have we updated all the, all of the technology?
No.
Do we have an idea of when that will all be?
Every year, we're budgeting funding to continuously upgrade some Chromebook and technology.
So it's going to be just a rolling upgrade?
It's a roll.
There's going to be no like, okay, we're done upgrading? It's going to be just rolling?
You can't, with your current budget situation, you can't afford to purchase-
No, 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 I know. I just wanted to basically understand that, so that every year we'll be upgrading or updating, I shouldn't say upgrading, if I'm saying it right, updating the Chromebook, so that we're not using really old ones during testing, that makes it unfair for one student versus another.
Correct.
But with that being said, is it, we're not rolling them, like, we're not replacing everybody's, isn't it just yearly, just some?
It's just some, every year.
Right, okay.
Okay. I just want to make sure that there's no, it's not unfair from one student to another. Okay. Thank you. I meant to ask you that earlier. Thank you.
They are faster than the previous one.
I'm sorry?
You probably meant to ask that the Chromebooks are faster. The newer Chromebooks are faster than the previous.
No, they're fast. You're my concern was, if like, say you got the new one, and I got the old one.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Palowski?
Just have a question on, on the approved lease agreement. I think I have gone back and forth a lot with David and Scott on this, but I think a little bit more clarity will put this to bed. So this is to purchase or to lease four trucks?
It's a, it's a lease purchase. It's how school districts purchase equipment.
But the intention is purchase?
It's a lease purchase. At the end of the five years, after the last payment, we own those, those vehicles.
Okay.
Yep.
So in my normal words, it's a purchase. We be financing over five years, and we own the equipment.
Correct.
Perfect. I believe we also looked at the option of, instead of buying new, going pre-owned, but the rationale was, the cost was pretty much the same.
It was more expensive. I, I sent you some documentation. We did a RFQ, request for quotes, for all of the dealers that are on the state contract for older vehicles that they had, and those vehicles, after outfitting, were about $10,000 more than the current vehicles, the new vehicles that we're leasing under state contract.
Okay. And do we have a schedule that we do, like every year, two, three trucks that we, because this is, again, refreshing our inventory of our fleet?
We, we are on a rolling, we're on a rolling schedule that we have. We have a lease purchase schedule for the entire district that encompasses about $1 million a year with regards to payments. Every year, a lease falls off, or two or three leases fall off. We either bypass a year, as we've done with our school buses, because our school bus fleet is pretty up to date. So the lease either falls off, we don't replace it, or in this scenario, we do replace it with a lease that's of the same or close to the same price. So we, we're not seeing a decrease or an increase in the overall expenditure in the, in the general fund.
Okay. So when this lease kicks in, we don't have any other trucks on lease right now that we are paying?
We don't have trucks, we have school buses.
Of course.
And we have other, we have other leases, but no, we do not.
Sure. No, I'm only focusing on trucks, just to make sure. Okay. And, and this is just another thing, maybe not a question to you, David, but just in general for the board. Currently, I believe what we have is we are owning nine trucks in our fleet, plus three, four drum trucks and other, other equipments as part of it. Another option that could be thought, again, not, not right now, but something can, that we can engage snow removal services, rather than having our own fleets doing our own services. So having or owning our, our own fleet of, of trucks increases a lot of TCO, there is an insurance, maintenance, the effort, the labor that you pay. So engaging services, like we engage a lot of vendors for services, can sometimes be cost productive, something for us to, to consider. And I understand we have 90% of fleet, and we cannot cut and cut over to, to contractual services, like removing snows, but, but something to kind of be cognizant and aware of, if there is a way to split out, let's say a school, or two schools, for snow removal as a pilot project, and then eventually make it more district-wide. So something to kind of think on, or if you have a question, something to ponder on.
We can talk about that during a committee. We could talk about that during committee. That's where that would fall first, prior to have an open discussion now without prior knowledge.
The fact that you're mentioning, second note to Mr. Krishna about that, because it's under business operations, about what you're looking to accomplish, that would be helpful.
Please do.
Any other?
Any more questions? Any more questions? Okay, can I have a motion? Right? Motion, now go ahead, motion?
Who's motion?
Deepa.
Deepa.
Second. Smita.
Ms. Julie Farrar?
Yes.
Ms. Alicia Khan?
Yes.
Mr. Rajakrishna?
Yes.
Dr. Smita Raj?
Yes.
Mrs. Lisa Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Rajesh Soni?
Yes.
Mrs. Deepa Karthik?
Yes.
Ms. Laura Hernandez?
Yes.
Consent agenda passes.
Awesome. Okay. I don't have another margin. Okay, that's it. Okay. So please note that the next scheduled Board of Education meeting is set for Thursday, March 13, 2025, at 7 o'clock, right here. And I, can I have a motion to adjourn? I almost hit it. Alicia, second. Julie? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, South Brunswick.